Good evening. I call our Thursday, September 25th, 2025 regular city council meeting to order. This is our regular 7:00 PM meeting. All council meetings are live streamed and just wanted to announce that tonight we will be having an executive session prior to adjournment of our council meeting in regard to collective bargaining matters. We will kick things off with our opening prayer with Pastor Jim Case from Talmage Lutheran Church. Then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening and blessings. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, as we enjoy the new day, we enjoy the presence of knowing that you are with us, directing us, and helping us see your light to light the light of Talmage more brightly. As we ask you, be with all those who are in attendance here. We ask you in valor those who have been honored earlier at the Talmage Fire Department. Bless this evening. Bless our acts and our actions. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Next item, we'll have our roll call.
Jonathan Bolis.
Here.
Christine Sippa.
Here.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Tracy Fletcher.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
All right, we are all in attendance this evening. Item four, correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes. Tonight, we are in receipt of two prior meeting minutes, one from 8:28:25 and the other from 9:11:25.
I will make a motion to approve both the 8:28:25 meeting minutes and the 9:11:25 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from 8:28:25 and the meeting minutes from 9:11:25. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Fletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes. All right, meeting minutes are adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Next up, our financial reports. We have none this evening. Public hearings, also, we have none this evening. So that brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is our community input. This is a time in the meeting where we invite those who wish to speak on items not on the agenda. You may come to the podium and state your name and address, and you'll be granted two minutes. And tonight, I know we have the, first up, Portage County Job and Family Services is here to introduce a new program for foster care. And this is Nani Shingala.
Hello, my name is Nani Shingalia, and I am at 449 South Meridian Street, Ravenna. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come here and present. I am very excited to share that Portage JFS has partnered with Columbiana County and Medina County to introduce a brand-new initiative called Treatment Foster Care. So what that is, is for kiddos who have intense behavioral needs, instead of sending them into congregate care, we are looking to recruit, train, license, and maintain treatment foster homes here within Portage County, Medina County, and Columbiana County. What this does is reduce kiddos going into congregate care or residential care. We can keep them in our homes, within our communities, and maintain a sense of normalcy for children. So I urge you to ask family members, look within, talk to your community to build an awareness for the need for foster homes and treatment foster homes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, I'll welcome Mr. Jacob Holcomb. Again, just please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. My name's Jacob Holcomb. I live at 659 Kiowa Trail. I'll be quick. This is, I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize ahead of time. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow residents. I want to begin by recognizing the hard work and dedication of our city leaders, workers, and our first responders. That being said, I come before you tonight with concern that weighs heavily on me as a resident. Last year, City Council, with supportive mayor, agreed to purchase and install Flock license plate camera readers across the town. While I understand the intent was to improve public safety, I'm deeply troubled by how this decision was communicated, or more accurately, not communicated to the public. I only learned about this program during a dinner conversation with a friend who doesn't live in Talmage. Out of curiosity, I researched further and discovered a map showing 16 cameras already installed in our city. None are which are publicly marked. I couldn't find anything on the Talmage website or on the police Facebook, or any discussion steps or some minutes. These cameras are not simply license plate readers. I believe that label is misleading. Flock cameras capture more. They log, make, model, color the vehicle, as well as unique identifiers such as dents, bumper stickers, decal. Flock itself describes this as a vehicle fingerprint. Courts have already signaled that this kind of persistent, warrantless surveillance raises constitutional concerns. In Carpenter versus United States, 2018, the Supreme Court ruled that continuous tracking of cell phone location data requires a written warrant because it is truce of the nature. If the police want to use a GPS device to track my car's location, they would need to go to court and obtain a warrant. Yet, with these cameras, police can follow a person's movement throughout the city without any judicial oversight. When comparing nearby cities, Talmage has one of the highest concentrations of these cameras, second only to Akron. That means I cannot get gas, buy food, leave town, go to church, or even attend this meeting tonight without passing one of these cameras. And it comes at a price. Taxpayers spent roughly $50,000 for the installation in the first year of subscription and tens of thousands every year after that to keep the cameras up. At the same time, residents are facing three new levies on this new November ballot, and increases to water and sewage, higher garbage collection fees, and the power as well. The last thing taxpayers should be doing is funding a mass surveillance program that watches everywhere we go. Flock as a company, and I promise I'm finishing up. Flock as a company also has a troubling record already. While it claims data is owned by the local police, investigation report in Illinois revealed that Flock allowed U.S. Customs Border Protection to access its data despite local and state laws prohibiting such sharing. In Virginia, the city of Norfolk is being sued by the residents alleging the cameras are unconstitutional, warrantless surveillance. By granting unrestricted access to this data, we risk creating a system where residents can be tracked, profiled, investigated without due process. This unchecked power undermines the very freedoms the Constitution is meant to protect. In fact, there's already been cases of officers misusing it. For example, in Kansas, a police officer used the license plate data to stalk his ex-girlfriend, ultimately leading to conviction in federal court. I urge City Council and our mayor to terminate this program or at the very least, pause it until there has been full, open community discussion, which I know is one of the pillars for mayor. Transparency, accountability, and respect of civil liberties must guide every decision that affects the people of this city. As it stands, this program is unreasonable, invasive, and unconstitutional. Thank you for your time and listening to your residents.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you, Jacob. Would the Law Department or Mayor have any comments on that?
I'll just say that the Flock cameras are only used for law enforcement purposes. They have to be, they have to have a law enforcement purpose, and they're audited and monitored with regard to that. So we can take a look into the other things that he raised tonight. But otherwise, I know that there is restriction on how they are used. They're not used for monitoring regular traffic. No. So we will, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
I can also help to follow up with you on this as well. But really quick, just so there's some dialogue, any comments from council? Okay, all right. We will be following up on that. Thank you very much for coming in. Next up, we have agenda additions. So we'll move to the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction. This is presented to our own Director of Finance, Molly Gilbreth, by Tina Ludwig of Northeast Regional Liaison.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for a few minutes of time on your agenda. And we're here to celebrate a job well done. My name is Tina Ludwig, and I am Auditor of State, Keith Faber's Northeast Regional Liaison. Or, as the auditor likes to say, I'm your personal customer service representative. It's my honor to be here on behalf of Auditor Faber to present the Auditor of State Award with Distinction to the city of Talmage. Each year, our office is responsible for conducting more than 4,200 audits of our 6,000 clients statewide. This award places your organization in a select group as just 4% of our clients qualify for the award. The Auditor of State Award is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meets the following criteria defined as a clean audit report. The entity must file financial reports with the auditor's office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis and prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. The audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or questioned costs. The entity's management letter contains no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than the threshold per uniform guidance, lack of timely report submission, bank reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, findings for recovery less than $500, and public meetings or public records issues. This award represents the hard work of all of the city of Talmage's staff and employees who make every effort each day to attain accounting excellence. We'd like to recognize the council, the administration, and the finance department that have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar. What this truly means is that across the entire organization, you have the people and processes in place that understand fiscal accountability. Specifically, we want to recognize Finance Director Molly Gilbreth for her leadership, professionalism, and exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. I've only been in my role for three months, but this award is a lot of hard work. And she definitely deserves the recognition. So on behalf of Auditor Faber, I would like to present the city of Talmage the Auditor of State Award with Distinction.
I am gonna say something up here. I do want to reiterate, because I think while I might be the face receiving this award, I cannot do this on my own. Thank you to my staff who works hard every day to do their job and to all of the employees who work here every day and do their jobs and do what they need to do so that we can be accountable to our residents fiscally. So thank you all. Thank you, council, for your support also.
All right, congratulations. Next up on the agenda, we have our certificate. This is our monthly certificate of appreciation. Today's certificate is awarded to Kim and John Tuesday of Tuesday Photography of Talmage. Tonight's award is presented by Councilwoman Jessica Epstein.
You guys can come up or wait till the end. Up to you. You'll be in front of the camera, though, instead of behind it. Yeah, I know. It is my honor, as a member of Talmage City Council, to recognize John and Kim Tuesday of Tuesday Photography for their outstanding service to the residents of Talmage and the surrounding communities for over 35 years. John and Kim are not only the 2019, 2021, 2022, 2024 Akron Beacons Best Photographer winners, but they're also an Ohio Certified Professional Photography Studio. Over these 35 years, their work has represented the perfect blend of contemporary style, creative artistry, and professional excellence right here in Talmage. For decades, the Tuesdays have captured the very best moments here, preserving history one photo at a time, from high school graduation portraits, including my husband's, which was a couple decades ago at this point. I almost brought his photo, because I love the opportunity to embarrass him, but I resisted the urge.
What year? What year did he graduate?
2002.
Okay.
Yeah. And our daughters cheer, our daughters dance. I think they photographed potentially everybody on council's family at one point. Weddings, family milestones, and community events, they have been there to document the stories of our lives. But beyond their talent and achievement, what makes John and Kim so remarkable is who they are. They're good, kind people. And I've heard that multiple times just tonight. So they pour care and heart into everything they do. On behalf of the city of Talmage, it is my privilege to present the certificate of appreciation to Tuesday Photography.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations. Next up on our agenda additions, we have one more item. This is a liquor license request, MMCS Services LLC, MAPCO 991-N, 170 Talmage Circle. Talmage requesting a C2 and C1 liquor license. And I believe everyone on council received some follow-up information. If you had a chance to review, Ms. Poole, would you like to comment?
Yes, good evening, everyone. All likely recall the previous request from Circle K in July that added the C2 permit to existing C1 and updating the permit to the holder MMCS Services LLC. This permit is for the same C1 and C2 permits to the newly rebadged MAPCO. I know many of us have driven past MAPCO on the circle, and we can see the badging there. So a hearing is not recommended in this case.
Any comments or questions from council? And just a point-of-order clarification, so the motion would be to not recommend holding a hearing, correct? Okay.
I would make that motion to withdraw the request of a hearing for the MAPCO.
Second, just not requesting.
Not requesting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to not request a hearing in regard to the liquor license request. Any discussion or questions? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy Fletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
All right. Therefore, we request not to hold a hearing by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Next up is our reports of administrative officers. We will start things off with Mayor Kilway.
Thank you. I'll try to be really brief this evening. I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to the men and women of the Talmage Fire Department. Before tonight's council meeting, we recognized the Talmage Fire Department's A-Shift and with a unit citation, and Lieutenant Carl VI with a Distinguished Service Medal for their valor in service on June 4th. Their courage, professionalism, and quick action saves lives and prevent a greater tragedy. Their actions embody the very best of the fire service, and we're truly grateful for their dedication to protecting our community. Again, I want to congratulate them. I also want to once again congratulate our Finance Director, Molly Gilbreth, for your award from the Ohio Auditor of State this evening. She runs a really tight ship, and I'm very proud of her for that and very thankful for that. So thank you very much for everything that you do for our city. Just a couple reminders. The 200th anniversary of the historic church on the circle is going to be this Sunday, September 29th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Everyone is invited. Our farmer's market, we have only two more weeks until it ends on October the 9th. Electronic recycling is on October the 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Talmage Rec Center parking lot. Also, I know this came up at the last council meeting. Beggar's Night, or Trick or Treat, as some call it, will be on Thursday, October 30th, from 5:30 till 7:00 p.m. Just a quick reminder to anybody that is participating in Trick or Treat to please turn your porch light on to let everyone know that you have candy or goodies to pass out to all the kiddos. And then, we also have Veterans Day Ceremony is Tuesday, November the 11th. It will be at the Talmage Historic Church on the circle at 10:00 a.m. This is City Council, the city of Talmage and the Talmage American Legion, Neil Lawrence Post 255, put this on, and it is a great tradition to pay tribute to our men and women who have served our nation with courage and dedication. Also, the State Senator Casey Weinstein is going to have a Town Hall Forum on Thursday, October the 16th, from 5:30 till 7:00 p.m. at the Talmage Library. The Town Hall will feature Senator Weinstein, myself, and Representative Derek Hall, and a representative from the Summit County ADM Board, who will be sharing information about their upcoming levy. And also, the city of Talmage is hiring a technician one in the street department. For more information, you can visit our website, talmageohio.gov/jobs. And the fall edition of the Talmage Circular is coming soon. It is the quarterly newsletter created through a partnership with the city, the schools, and the parks. You can discover the latest news, community news, upcoming events, and important dates for all Talmage residents. Pending any questions from council, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. All right, next up, our Director of Administration, Mr. Ignazito.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Council President Bolis. Just one update that I'll try to make brief. House Bill 96 went into, goes into effect on September 30th. And the specific area I wanted to just briefly mention is the requirement for a cybersecurity program under the Ohio Revised Code. The goals of the legislation is to ensure confidentiality, integrity, and availability of public data and technology systems in light of the growing threat of such things such as ransomware phishing and other cyber attacks. So specifically, the law directs each legislative authority to adopt a program that's consistent with generally accepted cybersecurity practices, including a lot of the things that we do currently here. We have a well-defended network infrastructure and security program here at Talmage, which is managed by our Office of Information Technology. However, each Bill 96 has raised the bar considerably, and we'll need additional assistance to achieve these standards that are written in House Bill 96. To comply with these requirements, the city must adopt a cybersecurity program through an ordinance. They say through a resolution. But we're going to be requesting an ordinance, and we've prepared a draft ordinance, and we'll be submitting that to the Law Director this week for submission at next council meeting for year review. We do not, will not be accept, I will not be asking for first reading adoption on this. As part of this ordinance, we'll be asking council for an additional appropriation of $42,000 to conduct an assessment of our security environment and other security-related functions and activities. I'll be emailing you additional information on this topic to discuss. And this, some of this information is sensitive in nature, and so we'll discuss it during an executive session when we get to specific details of it. That's all I have for my report this evening, pending your questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to our economic developer, Ms. Poole.
Good evening. For my update, recently, I have had some opportunities to stay engaged at the state level. We're fortunate here in Ohio that Jobs Ohio has quite a few programs that are intended to keep the business landscape competitive here in the state. And some of those opportunities included an OEDA, which is the Ohio Economic Development Association webinar, an Ohio's Transformational Mixed Use Development Program. This provides tax credits for eligible mixed-use projects, which is, could come into play here for our city. On 9/17, I had the opportunity to attend the OEDA Economic Impact Course. And then on the 22nd, I attended a webinar on laying the groundwork for successful economic development projects. And all of these instances are just other things that we can have in our toolkit to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to bring in new projects that are successful. At a county level, we have a monthly team meeting with the Portage team, and that's a constituent of all the economic development partners that are in Portage County. And we had a virtual info session on the Jobs Ohio Relocation Incentive Opportunity, which is a really cool new program that was just rolled out in August. This is a brand-new incentive that allows for $15,000 for employers to recruit talent outside of the state. If they are doing so above a benchmark that they have done over the past three years. So if an employer wants to start recruiting more folks than they ever have or start recruiting folks for the first time, they're able to use that $15,000 as an incentive, as a bonus. They can do however they want. So that's, one of the major priorities is to make Ohio highly competitive. We're in the top five in the nation, and the idea is to become number one. We also are keeping up our relationship with my counterpart, Mike Ladd, over in the JED, the Joint Economic Development District in Brimfield. We do have a few openings on the horizon. We have a pending update for the Ken De Tire opening, so stay tuned for that. Also, many of you have been aware of the VA Imaging and Infusion Center that is opening. And the address of that is 3838 Cascades Boulevard. You probably recognize that right next to Kohl's. That will be a wonderful resource for our community. They are slated to begin taking their first patients as soon as October and are preparing to have a grand opening by the end of the year, so stay tuned for that. Those were a couple of the big ones, just to kind of keep your eyes open for from us. And then, as far as Talmage businesses go, pleased to have shared some information about two recent instances of Talmage businesses in the news, following up to the email that I shared with all council members. Store Tech Engineering article in Properties Magazine, this is a trade magazine, Northeast Ohio's Monthly Realty Architecture and Construction Magazine. It's great visibility for the city of Talmage to see that we're business-friendly, that an organization who could have chosen Michigan decided to choose Talmage, Ohio, over Detroit, Michigan for their corporate headquarters expansion. This will, the bottom line with this is not only will it make them more competitive in the global automotive market, but it also drives business and job growth right here in our backyard, which is wonderful to see. It's also a true economic development success story. I know we talk about this a lot, that economic development is a long haul over many years. This is an example of that. This was a two-plus-year project with a long tail that started way before I ever joined the city. So kudos to the city of Talmage, Insight Advisory Group, Jobs Ohio, Portage Development Board, Cascade Capital Corporation, Portage Community Bank, and Campbell Construction once again for the collaboration on that success. And then on the other side of the coin, we also had an article about our very own Tiny Circuits located right here on 484 Tacoma Avenue. Ken Burns is a really neat guy. If you have the chance to meet with him, I did so a couple of weeks ago, and they create the tiniest technology products, many of which are sold to retail giant Amazon, or develop for components in products such as Tempo Walk, which is a product for the Golf Brand Club Car, just to name a few of the things that they do. the things that they do. As a result of that visit, I was able to connect Ken to some of our associates that work at the Manufacturing Advocacy and Growth Network, Magnet for short, to ensure that Tiny Circuits has the resources they need to thrive here in Talmadge as they continue to grow their business at scale. So, those were a couple of call-outs that really were highlights of the month of September. In addition to those, we have completed seven BRE visits for the month, with two next week, so total of nine for the month, which will take us to 46 visits by the end of this quarter. So, going into the fourth quarter, we will be well-positioned for 50 visits, over 50 visits, I should say. And if there are no further questions, that concludes my update for this evening.
Thank you. All right, next up is our Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr.
Good evening. Just a couple of points to make a no-rule report. Rachel, could you get the slide show up? Thank you. So, I want to make sure that everybody's aware of the Talmadge Fall Street Festival. It's October 18th, 1 to 5, at the Talmadge Rec. It's an outdoor festival celebrating with food trucks, the beer garden, DJ and dancing is new this year, a costume contest is also new, and then you also have the hayrides, pumpkin painting, inflatable games, and crafts and more. The key, though, this year is all kids' activities are free, so hopefully word gets out, and each year it's gotten better, so hopefully this is an outstanding year. Also, I'd like to mention Ordinance 2025-76. This is requesting council to pass this ordinance to demo the muffler shop, and an unknown. So, we have a brownfield grant right now to remedy the site. The site's coming back pretty good, however, there's, in the middle of that floor are four floor jacks, and that's what they look like to the right, if you cut away. They got to get tests underneath them, so you got to remove those. So, it does make sense to spend almost half the amount to demo the place, because the demo includes removing the floor jacks, but they got to remove it to get, to do the remedy. The grant is almost out at the end of this year. There could be an extension, but they still haven't committed to that, so it just makes sense just to demo the whole site and be done with this. So, that's what that ordinance is about. And that includes the report, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Next up, our Director of Finance.
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
Any questions for Ms. Gilbreath? All right, moving on to our Director of Law.
Thank you. I have no report this evening.
All right, that will bring us to our reports of standing committees of council of the whole. First up is our Planning and Zoning Committee with Councilwoman Pletcher.
Thank you. I will open Planning and Zoning Committee. This evening, we have no items on the agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to discuss, or questions? Hearing none, I'll close committee.
Thanks very much. All right, next up is our Finance Committee. I'll turn it over to Councilman Pavlik.
Thank you. I open Finance. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, events, and expenditures. Currently, there is one third reading and four first reading ordinances. First up is Ordinance 2025-72 in third reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the County of Summit and for other political subdivisions for job creation, retention, and tax revenue sharing, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway, do you have anything to add to this?
No, this is the third reading. I think there were a couple of questions at the last one. Ms. Gilbreath, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I did want to follow up. I believe the question was, what communities are not, have not been historically members of this? Copley, Hudson, Richfield, Stowe, and Twinsburg Township are the five communities in Summit County that have not participated in this in the past.
Copley, Hudson, Richfield, Stowe, and Twinsburg Township?
Yes. Okay. There was discussion that, with these changes that are being made, that, you know, these communities would be re-approached with an opportunity to join. I've not heard anything otherwise that they were, but those are the five communities outside of the contract.
Is there any questions on Ordinance 2025-72? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve or reject Ordinance 2025-72?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, go ahead. I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-72.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt and a second. Is there any other questions on Ordinance 2025-72 from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ordinance 2025-72 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next up in first reading is Ordinance 2025-73, accepting donation of sports lighting systems at North Avenue, Challenger Field, 670 North Avenue, and the permanent dugouts at Maccah Field, located at 183 Maccah Drive, to the City of Talmadge Little League, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway, Director of Finance, Ms. Gilbreath, and Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. And if you do want to comment on this ordinance?
Yes. Just want to say this is something that Little League does quite a bit each year. They end up donating something towards the fields or towards the parks, and I think the Challenger Field's really going to be something else in the near future. They are already planning on doing some upgrades with the parking lot up there, so this is nothing unusual. They've done this for years, so.
Yes, I would just like to thank Talmadge Little League for their dedication to youth sports, specifically baseball, softball, and challenger ball as well. What they do for our community is invaluable, and I want to thank them very much for this and for this donation.
Yeah, I'm just echoing my thank you to Talmadge Little League. I did speak to the Board President. I don't think he was able to make it tonight, but just thanking all the volunteers, I mean, even like the dugouts, you know, that was all volunteer-based, and they had a big, they had a really big turnout for those, and those went up in, I think, a day or two. So, and they look really nice.
So, everything's installed?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Is there any more questions, or is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-73.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ordinance 2025-73 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up is Ordinance 2025-74, appropriating additional amounts of income tax refunds and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Finance, Ms. Gilbreath. Ms. Gilbreath, would you like to add any comments?
Just, we've had some very large income tax refunds in the net profit area, specifically the JED had a refund over $200,000 that we had issued to one of those businesses, so that's well outside of our normal activity, so I'm just requesting that we replace those funds back into the budget. That department cannot take that kind of overage, so we are going to need to replace those funds, and that should suffice us for the rest of the year. The refund season is about over October. In November and December, the refunds go down quite considerably due to the timing of when they have to be issued and tax returned, so this is just to replenish what we've seen in that overage this year.
Is there any comments or questions from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt or move it to second reading?
Motion to approve Ordinance 2025-74.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Ordinance 2025-74. Is there any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ordinance 2025-74 passes with a motion of seven to zero. Next up is Ordinance 2025-75, reducing appropriations in the OWDA Loan Fund, number 580, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Finance, Ms. Gilbreath. Ms. Gilbreath, is there anything you wish to add?
It's just the end of the year, and I'm starting to try to clean up what has occurred and what has not occurred through the year, based on our planning or changes in plans that have been necessary to take place. So, this is just the first of those. As we discussed during the water rate increases, we have moved away from doing all of these projects in one, at one time, and we will be phasing these specific projects over a five-year period to fix those water lines, and in accordance with the rate structures that was passed by council. So, this is just to remove this from the 2025 budget, because we will not be completing those projects.
And if memory serves me correct, there were five water projects.
Yes, there were five projects included in this, and they've been phased, they have been included in a five-year capital plan, based on where we need to go, which was included in the rate study.
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't partake in any of those for this year?
No, we have, we have not moved forward with any of them this year.
Okay. Is there additional questions from Ms. Gilbreath or Administration? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-75?
Motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-75.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt and a second for Ordinance 2025-75. Is there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ordinance 2025-75 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up is Ordinance 2025-76, appropriating necessary funds for the demolition and continued renovation of 892 Northwest Avenue, and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. Mayor Kilway, would you want to add anything?
Just basically what Service Director Rohr had said, we need to do this demolition in order to finish the remediation, so, in order to take advantage of the grant that we received.
Once approved, what's the timeline look like on the demolition?
Before the end of the year.
How much more do they have to go? Just those, the?
At the muffler shop? Yeah, they would have to start, I mean, that's a small building.
Okay.
I mean, probably two weeks stops.
Got it. All right. Is there a motion to adopt 2025-76?
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2025-76.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second for Ordinance 2025-76. Is there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Ordinance 2025-76 passes with a motion of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is there anything else that needs to be brought before committee? Hearing none, I will close committee. Thanks.
Thanks very much. All right, we will move on to our Personnel Committee with Councilwoman Sippa.
Thank you. Personnel Committee deals with personnel, labor relations, insurance claim, rules of council, and state statutes. I would like to adjourn to go into executive session to talk about the labor relations.
We just need a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters.
Okay. Need, do I need to repeat that, or is?
Need a motion?
Need a motion to go into executive session to discuss labor relations matters.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the labor relation matter.
Second.
Clerk, please call.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Time 7:47, we will be adjourning into executive session with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the time is now, okay, no, now the time is now 8:03, we're 8:04, we're back from executive session.
Okay, time is now 8:04 and I'm calling Personnel back into session. We have a third reading, or third reading of ordinance as in resolutions, ordinance 2024-75 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2764 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Mayor?
Thank you. As, as we discussed, I would recommend adoption of this at this time. Thank you, we are ready.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-75.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Time's 7:47, we will be adjourning into executive session with a vote of seven to zero.
And take action following the executive session.
Okay, the time is now, okay, no, now the time is now 8:03, we're 8:04, we're back from executive session.
Okay, time is now 8:04 and I'm calling Personnel back into session. We have a third reading, or third reading of ordinance as in resolutions, ordinance 2024-75 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2764 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Mayor?
Thank you. As, as we discussed, I would recommend adoption of this at this time. Thank you, we are ready.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-75.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Time's 7:47, we will be adjourning into executive session with a vote of seven to zero.
And take action following the executive session.
Okay, the time is now, okay, no, now the time is now 8:03, we're 8:04, we're back from executive session.
Okay, time is now 8:04 and I'm calling Personnel back into session. We have a third reading, or third reading of ordinance as in resolutions, ordinance 2024-75 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2764 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Mayor?
Thank you. As, as we discussed, I would recommend adoption of this at this time. Thank you, we are ready.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-75.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Time's 7:47, we will be adjourning into executive session with a vote of seven to zero.
And take action following the executive session.
Okay, the time is now, okay, no, now the time is now 8:03, we're 8:04, we're back from executive session.
Okay, time is now 8:04 and I'm calling Personnel back into session. We have a third reading, or third reading of ordinance as in resolutions, ordinance 2024-75 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2764 and providing for immediate enactment. Sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Mayor?
Thank you. As, as we discussed, I would recommend adoption of this at this time. Thank you, we are ready.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-75.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Sorry, Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-75 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
We have no additional items on our agenda. Does anyone have any else, anything else for Personnel? Hearing none, I close Personnel.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have our Safety Committee with Councilman Rubino.
Thank you. I call Safety Committee to order. The Safety Committee deals with Disaster Services, Communications, Fire, and Paramedics, Police, and Health. We do have one resolution on the agenda for today, Resolution 2025-4, Appointing City of Talmadge Representative to the Summit County Combined General Health District Board and Providing for Immediate Enactment. Sponsor of this is Mayor Kilway.
Thank you. I think you all received the email that I sent you with the bio and resume of Mr. Robert McGuire, who I am recommending be our representative for the Summit County Combined General Health District Board. He would be fulfilling the current unexpired term that was vacated when Patricia Billows gave her resignation on that, and then also for a four-year term beginning from January 1st of '26 through December 31st of '29. He is very qualified for this position. I think he would do an excellent job at, with it, and I would just ask for your, your approval on that at this time. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-4.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Clerk, please call, call the roll.
Jonathan Bolis?
Yes.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein? Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
With that, the reso, I'm sorry?
Thank you very much.
With that, the resolution passes seven to zero. There is nothing else on the agenda for the Safety Committee. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I close committee.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we will move on to our Community Issues Committee with Councilman Roy.
Yes, I'd like to open up Community Issues. Community Issues Committee deals with Parks and Recreation, Civil Affairs, Liaison between Council and the Recreation Board of Intergovernmental Affairs. Tonight, we have nothing in front of us tonight unless somebody has something else to add. If not, I will close committee.
All right, thank you very much. And last up, our Public Service Committee with Councilwoman Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste, and trash. We have no ordinances or resolutions before us this evening. Are there any additional items from Council or Administration? Hearing none, I close committee.
Thanks very much. Onto item 11, reports of special committees. Council Operations Committee, we have no additional items this evening. Then we'll just move to, any announcements? Any announcements this evening? And...
I want to...
Oh, yes.
Congratulations, Sue, on her final meeting.
Fantastic one.
You, you are welcome back anytime, and I also want to give a shout out to Rachel in running her first meeting, and she did a fantastic job.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I've, all of us have learned so much from you, you know, and over the years and coming on and just, I really appreciate everything that you've done.
If I can just say, I, I worked very closely with Sue over the years, and we will certainly miss her and her happy disposition around, around the office, and we thank you so much for all your dedication to the city and all your hard work.
Early retirement.
Yeah, and she, and she has offered to be an intermittent if we need her.
I, I just want to say too, Susan and I go farther back than anyone here could even imagine, to when I was in college teaching aerobic classes and she would come to my class. That's when I first met Sue. She is wonderful. Thank you so much for your dedicated service to the city, for your friendship. We'll be in touch.
Yep.
We'll add that intermittent budget line into your...
Yep, yep. Excellent. All right, and then that brings us to our adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christine Sippa?
Yes.
Jessica Epstein?
Yes.
Donald Pavlik?
Yes.
Tracy Pletcher?
Yes.
Ted Roy?
Yes.
Nick Rubino?
Yes.
All right, it is now 8:11 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you.